Six thirty, we'll call the meeting to order. Certified by compliance with the open records law?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hopper.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Menke.
Here.
Councilmember Reisler.
Here.
Councilmember Weisendek.
Here.
Councilmember Wiesapel.
Here.
Next, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
So, we have a motion and second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It's adopted. Next, we'll move on to public comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on an issue on the agenda or anything else? Please identify yourself for the record. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are the regular city council meeting minutes from October ninth, 2024, and the special council meeting minutes from October twenty eighth, 2024. Bartender license for Macy Kolowski for Bodie Saloon, Michelle M. McCann, Samantha E. La Marche? And Alexandra H. Herberg for Consumers Co-op.
Everything's fine.
So I'd like to make a motion concerning the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It's approved. Next, we will have a public hearing. The public hearing is an application for a combination Class B liquor and fermented malt beverage license for Troy A. Greenwald at the cell block two at two hundred and two oh four West Main Street. At this point here, I would like to declare the public hearing open for the request on this combination Class B liquor license. If anybody would like to speak for or against it, this is your opportunity. Please make sure that you identify yourself for the record. Again, would anybody like to speak for or against this combination Class B liquor license request? Hearing none. The one thing about it is we do have the applicants here. And I sort of gave them a heads up. We do like, if you would like to take the opportunity just to sort of introduce yourselves and then talk a little bit about what you're going to do with the business. We always sort of like to know.
Sure. So I'm Troy Greenwald, originally from the Rice Lake, Wisconsin area, currently living in Hayward, but hopefully relocating here. We're not, the cell block isn't broken. It's a beautiful business model. We don't plan on changing anything, maybe enhancing the salad bar. But other than that, that's about, that's about it. Okay. This is my wife Carmen Castle. She's going to be there all the time, same as me. I'm putting in a lot of time.
And you're right. It's, I think it's entombed, it's very popular. It's people coming through, people traveling through, people on motorcycle, everything, and so on. So obviously, obviously, we look forward to keeping this business going and obviously making a threat.
So, yeah. And Charlie and Patty have been friends of mine for over thirty years. So that's kind of how this worked out anyway. So.
Okay. About the same business hours as?
Yes.
They have?
I'm Carmen Castle. I'm sitting something and stuff. My background, I am college educated with advertising and marketing manager degrees. However, I've been in the industry for thirty-three years, serving in three different states and licensed in three different states. And I just feel like between Troy and I, we just want to come in and enhance and help out in the community, keep everything the same. However, if you guys need us and our help, once we relocate, which hopefully is very, very soon. But housing, as you can tell, you guys are from here, you know, there's not a lot to buy. But we're looking and we're looking forward just to welcoming everybody into our new place. Hopefully, December second should be closing. But nothing is going to change except for maybe adding a little bit more on the drink menu. Hours the same. We're throwing around opening one Sunday a month for brunch, a breakfast, if you can eat. So everything that we'd be doing would be more to enhance it instead of taking away. We're not changing the recipes. We're not changing prices. We're not doing anything different.
Well, you had me at Sunday brunch, but you're ruining all you can eat. Well, very welcome to the community.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We're looking forward to it.
Okay. I hereby declare the public hearing closed. Let's have discussion, possible action regarding the application for the Class B, or combination Class B liquor for malt beverage license for Troy A. Greenwald. It's on the floor for discussion or somebody will make to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Class B liquor and fermented malt beverage license for Troy A. Greenwald.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the application. Is there any more discussion? Or any other questions for the applicants, just as long as you have? Hearing none? Would all, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed say no? Motion's agreed to. You wish her the best of luck and hope.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Welcome to Duran.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, we're going to have another public hearing. This is regarding the 2025 budget. This includes everything, including EMS and so on. So this is specifically the opportunity. Obviously, we'll have our agenda item here to discuss if anybody wants to. But it's an opportunity for anybody in the public to speak. I hereby declare the public hearing open concerning the 2025 budget for the city of Duran. Again, if anybody would like to speak concerning the issue, please identify yourself for the record. Hearing none. I hereby call the public hearing to a close. So what we're going to do is we're going to have the review. We'll turn it over to the city administrator. This obviously budget has been through committees, been through and so on. There have been a few changes with some things that have had to be done, and she will explain those things. But again, let's review the 2025 annual budget.
Sure. So all committees have met. Finance committee met and it was approved to be published, which it was accordingly. Memo for the budget states that wages were calculated with a four percent increase for all full-time employees. There's an extra dollar increase for Jenny King and for Angie Morgan, the city clerk. They have been reviewed in quite a few years, and this is bringing them up to par with what other communities are paying the administrative staff. So that's also been worked in the budget. Health insurance benefits, we were hoping they would not increase as much as they have. Talked to the broker all this week, and they're being held at nineteen percent increase. So that has been worked into the budget that you have in your packet. You have, there's two budgets in there. One is the original one with your finance. I have updated it to include the nineteen percent increase in health benefits. That's the second one that you see. And I was able to make a balance with no adjustment to the levy. So it has been adjusted and zeroed out. The health insurance incentive that was offered in 2024 has been discontinued for a variety of reasons. It's just not feasible for the city to offer that to employees who choose not to take the insurance. On the general budget, thanks to point out, DIG had requested fourteen thousand five hundred for 2025 expenditures. The finance committee reduced that to eighty-five hundred. The library had requested eighty-five thousand from the city. They have been receiving seventy-eight thousand for many, many years, and the finance committee is recommending the full increase of their request to eighty-five thousand, with the caveat that this is to be reviewed annually. Obviously, it will be, it wasn't to be expected to be a one-time deal or an ongoing piece. Twenty twenty-five street project was not budgeted. Matt will discuss that as we get to his report, and that will be touched base, it will touch base in that. The water utility, sewer utility, and the other utilities, the stormwater utility are all addressed. There is an estimated water increase that's been worked in at fifteen percent. The PSC is going to determine that rate. We've had a long conversation with our consultant on getting that process continued to move forward, but it has been worked in. There is a water filtration system upgrade that's going to be paid for through a loan interest, low-interest loan using the Wisconsin State Drinking Loan Fund Loan Program, with payment starting in 2026. The sewer utility revenues are increasing by four percent effective January one. There's another project there. And then with the stormwater utility, revenue was increased by fifty percent, or I'm sorry, fifty cents effective January one. There are some sweeper repairs needed. And then the cap lot link includes eighty-five hundred for a new footwork truck and thirteen thousand for a potential street project moving ahead. Any questions on the budget?
Couple of things. First of all, we do have a couple items that are later in the agenda about making purchases out of this year's budget because that helped balance us for next year. And those will both be explained at the time about how we got to those things. The swimming pool part of the budget is included, of course, as we plan on being operational here this summer, this coming summer. I believe it's a pretty solid budget. Again, some estimates are in there because we don't know some things. We'll find out. That first year, we probably, we won't have a lot of, should have any expenses for certain things on maintenance because it's all under warranty for that first year. That's something, again, we'll have to look. The other thing about it, it was on committee discussion earlier concerning the, what the entrance fees will be to get into the pool, the admission and so on and so forth. There was a discussion, no final decision being made. We are going to work through those and have some options in front of us to try and make sure that we're meeting those needs. Of course, with the insurance not being as good, one of the things that was reported to us, based on our history, that did not help us in this particular case. The one thing about it is, of course, that, I mean, there's seven percent difference from where we wished we were or where we planned on being. Now, it does help us a little bit because we do get to spread that over multiple budgets. It's not like it all comes out of the general fund. We, the intention is that we will be taking the loan out for the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Security Financial Bank sometime in December. And that's going to be the things to cover. The project that we did on Sixth Avenue, also part of the purchase of the fire, buying into the fire trucks comes into play and part of it for the pool. And what we did was we said, we're going to take the full amount. It's already been approved to do so. But one of the payments is going to be paid, made right back in January. So we're going to be paying back part of this. This keeps us basically with a levy at this point, pretty steady with what we've had in the past. We're not going to be raising the levy because we've been able to do that. Now, we're going to have another discussion coming up about this, about the road project and exactly if we move forward, but that's obviously a separate, you know, as far as do we want to add that to the levy or not. But right now, we would be keeping it generally about what we have in the past. But we will take that. But again, we're quickly paying off part of it right after. But again, it makes more sense to take the whole thing and then make the payment. Because again, we'll be paying that back out, but it probably makes the most sense. That's what I have. Any questions? Is anything that is a concern? This is the opportunity for the council to discuss it. And just the number on there, I can't remember what she decided, what the actual tax levy is. Oh, no, what's the mill rate? I'm sorry.
Oh, I did not figure that out. Apologize. I have come with a handy.
Okay.
I saw, I'm sorry.
I just had a quick question on the insurance. So that's going nineteen percent. Wow. What a punch in this stuff like that is. But what was the increase last year? Do you remember off the top of your head?
So last year, I wasn't here last year, but if I recall correctly from seeing the documents that I did see, it was, I want to say it was twelve percent last year, if memory serves, one of the documents I did see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kate came in there on that nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, and we were able to negotiate down to that.
Yeah. Our broker tried very, very hard. He threw back at them like three or four different times, like, try again. Can you try again? We really need this to come down. He tried again, and they just were not budgeting this year.
I said your floor is only seven. It was going to be twelve, we budgeted twelve, but then we maxed seventy percent. It was like, oh, at least we've ever had.
And one of the factors that probably doesn't help us is our pool is pretty small.
Right.
And if there's, there's some factors, some history, it plays in a bigger as compared to, if we were, had two hundred people in the pool as compared to what exactly, what our number is that we have people in the pool.
Twenty-two. Was it twenty-two?
Yeah. So it doesn't, you know, that, that doesn't help.
I understand it's, it's the amount and the age of two.
Or a different.
Yeah. And that, yeah, that also plays in.
And he did, I want to say he did, our broker, our insurance broker, did put it out to market too, to look outside of our.
So we didn't look, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. He did, he did his due diligence. I'm confident that he did, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? And so we have the resolution.
The resolution looks a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. A little bit more detail as far as beverage goes. It does have, basically, it was in the paper.
Here's.
Yeah.
Okay. So resolution twenty-four oh eight to establish the tax levy at seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
It should be, it should be under eight E. It's a resolution.
Uh huh. It's on here.
It's in there. Yeah.
Yeah, it's in here. Yeah, B. I can't. I've got it.
Anybody else see happy? I have an extra packet if anybody needs to see it. Do you want to see it happy?
And again, so once, of course, we set the tax levy and then, of course, we get all the big work to the county. The county calculates everybody, and then we get those love notes in the middle of December telling us exactly what we're going to be paying. Before we get into the, obviously, I'd like to thank the city administrator and all the rest of the staff that worked very hard and the committees that helped put this all together. And, and again, to take a lot of the time it takes to put together a budget. Okay. If there's any more discussion, would somebody like to offer this resolution?
Oh, offer resolution number twenty-four oh eight.
Is there somebody like to make a motion for its approval?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
Sorry.
And there's a second. Okay. Resolution twenty-four oh eight adopting the 2025 budgets for each one of the departments and, of course, the tax levy for 2025 is on the table for any other discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hopper.
Yes.
Councilmember Reisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisendek.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiesapel.
Yes.
All six in favor?
Motion's agreed to. It is approved for 2025. Fair? No, that's okay. Okay. Next, we'll move on to the business agenda. Mayor's report. Well, it's been a while since we've met, even though we had that short meeting. By the way, I've, it's, I've got, I actually have to write it out, but I'll be hopefully as quick as possible on this. First of all, I'd like to send thanks out on behalf of the city for all of the staff that helped with the election, including the city administrator and everybody else, but especially to our city clerk, Angie Morgan, who is ahead of that and did a great job. Huge turnout, over a thousand voters, NBA processing, and so again, and all of the poll workers and everybody who helped. Angie does a great job. And obviously, the one thing about it is when we brought Tracy, and she has also experienced elections, where our previous administrator didn't have as much. So, so, so we had that little extra help, but again, a great job by everybody. I'd like to send out some community congratulations. Zane Richardson, sophomore at Duran-Arbitza High School, conference champion in cross-country, also a state qualifier, finished fourteenth in the state of Wisconsin at the WI State Meet. So again, to Zane Richardson, congratulations. Also, to the Panther volleyball team for winning the Dunn-St. Croix Conference Championship. I believe their first championship in about twenty years, something like that. Congratulations though to the Panther volleyball team on a wonderful season. This past Monday night, I had the opportunity to meet with the swim club. Talked about a number of subjects. We've also continued to meet with some donors and so on. One of the main things that I spoke about with the, with the swim club, beyond the fact I sort of updated them on construction, where we were at, those types of things, is that we are now going from, going to be going from a construction phase, which obviously will be coming to conclusion here at the end of the spring, first part of the summer. And we now, we need to talk about operations. And so what exactly are we going to do? I know the city, we're talking about staffing, we're talking about all those, those things that we need to do, admissions, lessons and so on. But when also I said, asked the swim club, they obviously want to continue working with us, supporting the pool and so on, and let's get those together to make sure that we're working together to not only have a successful pool, but also as fun and enjoyable and community, a community, important community resource and just a diamond, you know, in the city to make sure that it's as many people and we're having as much fun as we can. Next, the trunk-or-treat event. Congratulations to all the organizers, DIG and everybody helped put that on. And of course, all of the groups, businesses and so on, had the opportunity to come through, talked to a lot of folks during the event, nice crowd. Great weather again. I think we've had one really bad weather one over the years. Otherwise, it's been, it's been pretty good. So thank you very much for everybody who did that. Coming up, of course, on November thirtieth, dazzle day. Everything starts up at the high school when they have the big craft show and everything and the events. And there, all the way through, of course, the dazzle parade that evening. So again, wishing the best of luck to DIG for their dazzle day coming up here on November thirtieth. If somebody people had saw on social media, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Sheila Hoffman of Duran, Illinois. She just happened to be in the area. It was for a family thing, and, but she thought it would be neat since she'd be close to Duran. So actually, on Saturday, had the opportunity to meet and talk for a couple hours about the two Durans. They're a little smaller than us, about fourteen hundred. It's actually not that far from the Wisconsin border, but we had a great conversation, had the opportunity to show the Horton Room with the poster and talk a little bit about Duran and so on. But it was, in fact, it was funny because I sat and talked, we must have talked for two hours. Her parents were with her, and I know they were getting a little bored. I said to them, we got bored about, we're talking city business and so on, but that was fun. The other thing, of course, that happened was going to league conference. Few things that I'd like to mention that I picked up and talked about at league conference. The innovation grant, something brand new that the state has put out. Innovation grants are, municipalities are available, school districts can take advantage of them, counties. If you combine departments or work with other, in other words, and here's, here's the example that I've used with us and the rural, creating a fire district. That might be something that we could get some grant money for. The city administrator is checking in this. By the way, the first applications just went out here in the, within the last week, I think. And there's going to be a couple of applications where exactly that might fit in. But again, as I said, we are looking at that, and that was a great session I sat in on. I sat in one also on city financing. Of course, it was put on by Ailer's Associates, who does our work. And it was sort of a combination. I know Councilmember Menke sat in on the same one. Just to talk, you know, again, as I said, Ailer's, I can talk about city financing forever. But picking up on what's going on with the trends and so on, and I thought that was a good session. Sat in on a session on economic development, one also on the future of communications. One of the big things, and this was specifically with websites and with how people are getting their information, that podcasts are becoming the huge thing. People don't want to read anymore, they only want to listen to podcasts, and about how you can use your websites to do certain audio things for people, and that might be something that we could incorporate on with that. And one of the other sessions sat in, also Matt Gillis sat in on about the cost of roads. They, what they said you should do is take how many miles of roads and streets you have, determine how much it costs to replace them, and how often you want to replace them, every twenty years or every thirty years, divided by thirty, and that's what you're supposed to spend on roads every year. I think that Mr. Gillis was saying, yeah, let's do that. We don't have that kind of money, but, but again, it was a good session that I sat in on. And then, of course, the final thing at the state convention, especially for us Badger fans. The speaker at Thursday's luncheon was Matt Lepay, the voice of the Wisconsin Badgers. He had a lot of great stories and a few of the games I was at, a few of them I listened to on, saw on the TV. I did say the city clerk. I said, did you miss, did you pick up on those? She were, for us, those Badger fans, it was great. Had the opportunity to meet him afterward, shake his hand and talk to him for a few minutes. But they had the opportunity to speak and meet Matt Lepay, the voice of the Wisconsin Badgers, both football and basketball.
You have picture too.
Yeah, you have picture. Oh, yeah. It was nice to do that, so. Okay. That's my report. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Just a couple minutes if somebody else wants to speak who went to the league conference. If there's anything that stood out that anybody wants to say anything with. So I'm going to turn it over to anybody else.
Yeah. It was a fun conference for me. I kind of overbooked myself sometimes in all the sessions that are going on. If you want, you go, oh, this is not for me. Then you build up and come in late to another one. That's the way it goes. So I think I've attended maybe ten sessions total, most of them. Got through most of them. The most fun one for me personally was the Small Community Roundtable. Whoa. Lots going on in there. Matt was there with me too. He said, you should have got up and talked to someone. But the number one thing that I learned there is don't engage on social media. Number one takeaway from that one. The other one that I really liked a lot was fighting accounting fraud, uncover and prevent. That was pretty informative for me. People must read, yeah. And the number one thing, I didn't know that most of the fraud that's uncovered is by somebody reporting it, not. Audits don't catch it, you know, because every year we go through an audit. They're not going to catch any fraud that's going on. It's going to be done internally or by somebody reporting on somebody else or something like that, which is a good stat. But the best thing that they had, or I mean personally, was they said, if you ask to have a master payables list printed out, and then you check over that, because a lot of the frauds are, we made out a check to ABC Company, and then the next time is made out to ABC Company Incorporated, which goes into a different account and into my pocket, so we'll be setting those up shortly. Just kidding. And I don't know, that, that's the things that just stuck out in my mind as being the most informative for me.
Okay. Who else?
Yeah, you covered plenty of it. It was good, yeah.
I went to, there was a marketing one, I think, actually, Matt was in there too. That was, I think, awesome. And I actually meant to connect with Leanna, to connect her with a guy that was giving it the, I think the mayor of Stevens Point just agreed. I think, A, I think he could just speak on the color of carpet and it would be a great conversation. But the whole, the whole premise was like Stevens Point literally spends zero dollars on their marketing efforts, and they are like just killing it as far as like different little things that they're doing, kind of like for free. And like his, his thing is just say yes. Like, you know, and he talked about, you know, if somebody from, you know, three hours north wants to do an article about Stevens Point, he's like, not only do I want you to do that, I'll drive to you and, you know, give you, you know. And so they just talked about, you know, a lot of that stuff. And then I think in the same session, there were, I think it was Matt Talk, maybe that had, like, was spending like three hundred thousand or something ridiculous. And it's like, are you really getting your, you know, so it's all about like having key people, having mayors that like to speak, you know, and so.
It's been a trial.
So it was just really neat. And like, I think just his personality, some of the things that they've done, simple projects, even like, I think we tried some of them, but even like having like, you know, contests of painting the garbage cans, for instance, like, you know, they were eyesores. And now like people literally drive to Stevens Point just to go find their painted, you know, garbage cans and stuff like that, so. Yeah, it was good. Otherwise, I think there was one, a good one that I went to, kind of about what we've already discussed as far as some mental health stuff for our staff. And that one was kind of neat because it wasn't just for first responder staff, it was all staff and like how we deal with trauma, secondary trauma. And I think we are kind of on the right track of trying to like put some plans in place to help out those efforts. I think otherwise, that was the main points.
Thank you, everybody. Next, we move on to administrator's report. Next we move on to administrative report.
So, my report, there's a memo in your packet, it covers everything that's gonna be on the agenda that we talked about already, including the budget. But note that office staff, we're gonna be going down to the grocery store on Friday and ringing bells for Salvation Army for an hour. So as a kind of community outreach piece that the city staff likes to do, kind of stuff.
And all of those, just a shameless plug, because a lot of those funds go back to the human services. All of that. Eighty-six percent of every dollar that goes in there stays within Pepin County. So it's important to note, you know, that people don't realize that.
So we have a challenge for us, huh? Do well, yeah? Do a little jig out there, little dance. Hey Angie, ready? December 5th and 6th, I am going to Stevens Point, actually to attend Wisconsin City County Managers Association Women's Leadership Conference. I was able to attend last year and it was really, it was a good, good piece. It's open to everybody, but mainly focuses for women and what women face in this industry. So, real quick update on the elections, we had 85% voter turnout, I'm speaking on behalf of the city clerk, she gave me the go-ahead to say this on her behalf. We had 126 election day registrations, which is huge for us. There's a, currently, there were, well, there were 1,026 voters, the mayor alluded to that already. 235 absentee ballots were returned, that's an amazing number. And then, right now, there's 1,203 total registered voters. So, the city Durant should be very proud of the turnout that they brought to the polling place on election day.
Is that our highest ever?
Yeah. So, yeah, so kudos to everybody in the city. IT audit, just a brief update on that, we talked about that a couple months ago. I have a meeting with the state, they've got a free program that they offer to do an assessment, and they actually come on site and do that. Meeting with them next week virtually to just find out exactly what their procedure is and then getting that set up and getting that moving forward. And I did meet with another company about what they can and cannot do, I'll be following up with them after I meet with the state to have them take a look at that. Economic development, tourism, I've met with a couple of community members to discuss how we can promote the city, how to promote tourism and that economic development piece. I have another meeting scheduled, and Leanna's one of those, so county's being involved in that, she's, I think she's wearing her county hat, maybe? Yep. And then, a community focus piece that we put together, just kind of off the cuff, we are doing a glove and mitten drive for all the students at the, in the school district. There's a box out here in the lobby, we'll be collecting clean, new, weatherproof mittens and gloves up until December 13th for the community. And then, just a real quick, in your packet, you also have budget report and check register, which is down towards the bottom of your packet, just wanted to weigh that out. With that, we can move forward with the other items on the agenda and report for updates on those pieces as we take action on those.
Okay, discussion possible action regarding the purchase of Badger Books. This is new to us, so two things, first, a description of what they are. This is one of those items that they wanted to include in next year's budget, but we said that we have money this year that we could do it, and we have a quote in front of us. So again, explanation of what they are, what they'll do for the city, and then, of course, talk about the quote, please.
Of course, yep. So the Badger Books are an electronic poll book, so right now, it's fresh in your mind from voting a couple weeks ago, you come in, there's two poll books paper, you decide one of them, they have to find you in their flipping pages and so forth. The electronic poll book is basically tablets that are certified by the state of Wisconsin, and the poll book is on that tablet. And there's, we're asking for two of them, one of them is a server, that's, that's like the brains of the operation. The other one will feed off of that, they talk to each other, they are not connected to any internet, they are actually shipped with a separate router for themselves individually, so there's no security issue. And it's, it makes the process of registering and checking in very fast, very quick. It just follows, you follow the prompts on the screen for the poll workers, it's easy to use. And the best thing from my experience as, as a previous clerk is the follow-up at the end of the night or at the end, like, next day from the election. It literally is downloading a file of all the voters, take that file and a flash drive, you put it, plug it into your laptop, upload it to the state, the secure server, and it populates the poll book in, in the server for the database, the voter database. Whereas right now, Clerk Moran has to scan all those signatures in, she has to take a scanner and actually scan the barcodes, and it's gonna take her hours to do that. So it's a huge time saver and it's also a huge personnel saver, because we aren't gonna need to use as many poll workers, and we can have shifts then, so.
And then all the registrations too.
Yep, all the registrations, yep.
So I don't have to be able to go in and key.
That's right.
126 registrations that we just got.
So we have requested to get those purchased using funds from this year, and the total amount is 2,4300, I think it was. Yeah, around 4500, that's what it came in, too. And it's for two, two machines is what we're looking for, for this year, for this coming year. Hopefully to get them by the end of the year.
So 20, what? 2011 is for one book, is that the?
That's correct, yeah.
Usually buying two books, okay.
Because one's a server, so the one that's a server is just a little, like a hundred dollars more expensive than everyone.
2316.
Yep. So we're hoping to get them yet by the end of this year, build this year, and then hoping to use, well, there's a February primary, we would use them in February.
Now, do these only link up when you do them manually, or are they on wifi and what's the security system?
They're wifi with their own router, they have their own, they're not connected to the, to the city hall wifi.
They just talk to each other.
They just talk to each other, yep.
So they're standalone?
Yeah, standalone, that's correct, yep. I was actually a Badger Book trainer for the state in a previous life, so, yeah, so I have a lot of experience with them.
What's the life expectancy of these?
You know, the state constantly, is constantly doing updates and patches and such that they need to do, and so I, the machines themselves are, it literally is like, like what you'd see at a store to swipe a card to check out. I mean, so they could last five, seven, 10 years, you know, unless the technology.
They'd be almost probably close to five years.
Yeah, unless the technology changes, which I don't foresee that happening, so.
But they, would this be part of the IT audit or not, because it's separate?
It would not be, because it's separate, yep. Doesn't have anything to do with the system here, so, yep, yep.
Okay, any other questions on this?
Make a motion, we, wait.
Yep.
Make a motion, we purchased Badger Books as requested by city administrator.
What's the high mark to?
Up to 45, yeah, 45 should be plenty.
Forty-five, up to 4500.
Up to 4,500.
We have a motion second to go ahead with purchase of the Badger Books. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Mankie.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember West Apple.
Yes.
All six in favor.
Motion's agreed to.
Thank you.
Moving forward. Next we have discussion possible action regarding the renewal of Weber inspections for the 2025 Building Inspector Contract. This is a contract that we have come through every year, there is no direct cost to the city. Basically, when he does inspections, there are fees for that, and that's how he gets paid to do that. But again, we still have to have a contracted building inspector, and that's why we need to, to go ahead. It's, again, the same one we've, I think, 13 years I've been here, it's the same, same thing, again, no direct cost, but again, he'll be our building inspector and then, and then he charges accordingly for the cost of doing those inspections.
But we don't pay anything, but.
Whoever, whenever somebody calls, there needs to be a permit or inspection, he will go do it, and there's a fee associated with it, that's how he can spend. Okay. And those fees, I'm assuming are established by state statute and so on.
I think he can set his own, too.
He can set his own.
Yeah, there's something he can set.
That sounds good. And again, he's been doing it for a long time and it seems to work real well, so. Okay, would somebody like to make a motion concerning renewing the Weber inspections contract for 2025?
Make a motion, we renew the Weber inspections 2025 Building Inspector Contract.
I can second that.
We have a motion and second? Even though there's no money involved, it's still a contract, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Mankie.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember West Apple.
Yes.
All six in favor.
Motion's agreed to. Okay, so next we have, got a letter about a week ago. And it says, Dear Patrick J. Nellier of City Durant, the department would like to inform you that the grant for the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Program has been tentatively awarded to support the acquisition of 90 acres of land containing the Chippewa River State Trail by the Landmark Conservancy for conservation and public recreation purposes, the properties located partially in the city of Durant. So I got this, and then it basically also says on here that, that we have, it was the 30 days, where we could either, we could, don't have to do anything, but we've already gone on a record that we support this, and obviously support the bike trail, and then we have the opportunity to pass a resolution for, against it, so on. So, I had the city administrator put together a resolution for this. So, this is how it reads, "A resolution in support of the award of the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Program Grant to Landmark Conservancy for the acquisition of 90 acres of land containing the Chippewa River State Trail. Whereas the city of Durant has been informed that the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources have tentatively awarded a grant for the acquisition of 90 acres of land containing the Chippewa River State Trail to Landmark Conservancy for conservation and public recreation purposes. And whereas, Wisconsin State Statute 23.0917-5T provides the city may adopt a resolution that supports or opposes the land acquisitions funded by the stewardship program. And whereas, the city of Durant believes it would be in the best interest of the community, Chippewa County and the surrounding, or excuse me, and Pepin County and the surrounding area to adopt a resolution which supports the acquisition of said acreage for conservation and public recreation purposes. Now therefore resolved, the city of Durant hereby declares its support for the tentative grant by, by the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Program to the Landmark Conservancy for the acquisition of 90 acres containing the Chippewa River State Trail, and may it further resolve that the city of Durant directs the city clerk to transmit a copy of this resolution to Grace Mickelson's project manager for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources." Again, as I said, we did vote in support of it, just a regular motion, but this is an opportunity for this to pass a resolution to also support. Would somebody like to offer?
I'll offer a resolution.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Make that motion.
And is there a second? Okay, so we have the resolution on the table, Resolution 2409. For any other discussion, I don't know if anybody would like to speak up, I know we have one council member that probably knows a little bit about, you know, the support, when this is all gonna go down, as far as everything turns out right.
I don't actually know a whole lot about it, Maria does. She's been the one making all of this conversation, so.
But we're hoping that this process goes through and it moves forward, so.
Yeah, she's, yeah, she's been working with Don County and Landmark Conservancy to do this, so.
Okay. Any other questions concerning the resolution? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Weisenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Mankie.
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember West Apple.
Yes.
All six in favor.
Motion's agreed to, resolution is passed. Next we move on to public safety, October report, Chief Ridgeway.
Just a couple of things, the mayor had mentioned the truck or treat event, that was a great event, great turnout. But we had our officers there, decorated our truck and handed out a lot of candy that night, so it was a great event. The dazzle events are going to be going on next Saturday, we'll have officers coming to handle the parade, I'll be on during the day as well, for all of the events that are going on. They kind of brought back some of the events that they used to do in the years past, the horse, the horse carriage and things like that, so there'll be stuff going on during the day, a little bit more than in the past, so looking forward to that event, should be a great event and hopefully everybody can make it to that. One other thing regarding our emails, our .gov emails, we want to get that multi-factor authentication activated, so we'd like to activate that tomorrow, so if you haven't done that to your devices, make sure you go and do that. There's a, if you click on the nine buttons that are on the right side of your Gmail account, you'll be able to go to security and you'll be able to get to, you go to your account, and then you go to security, and you'll be able to turn on multi-factor authentication, and then you can set that up. And so make sure you set that, that up. If you can't, can't see it, I can talk to you after, after the council meeting and we can get it set up as well. But we definitely want to get that activated before we do any other things, and then also helps keep everything secure in our system. Let me know if you have questions on that, I can help you out with it. What's that?
Well, I'll have questions.
All right. And then the last thing I have is I just asked Jocelyn, she's working this evening, to stop down. Jocelyn is our newest full-time officer that we talked about at the last meeting, and so she started officially full-time on Sunday night, she's on her own, she's doing a great job, and we are really looking forward to having Jocelyn on our department. She's a graduate of Darien-Ardensaw High School, CDT-C. Jocelyn has been a part of our department for many years, from a couple of years of explorers when she was in high school, she did her internship here, we sponsored her through the academy, she worked part-time, and it's been a great, a great experience with Jocelyn, and we're very happy to have her here, full-time, working for the Darien Police Department, so.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Any big speech you want to use?
You took my thunder. Other than that, I'm just really excited to be working in Darien, up in Durant all the way, and so excited to serve the community and really start my career.
Officially on the board.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Next we'll have discussion possible action regarding the Dig Dazzle Holiday Parade Street closure request. I'm assuming it's pretty similar, we'll not be going to cross highway again, we're keeping it all on this line, Chief?
Correct, yes. The lineup will be on Madison Street, so we won't have to cross Highway 10, so, yeah, that was, there was some miscommunication, the current Dig staff thought that I wanted them over on the Elsivia side, and I never wanted them on the Elsivia side. One year we moved them over here and the lineup, they didn't like the way the lineup went, so they moved back, and I don't like them over there, so I'm very excited for them to be on Madison Street. It's going to be a lot easier for us to handle the parade, so.
And you can skip a state highway, it comes to you.
Yes. Everything looked good on the parade route and the closures.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion concerning the Dazzle Holiday Parade Street closure request?
I'll make a motion to approve the Dig Dazzle Holiday Parade Street closure request.
We have a motion and second to approve. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It's approved. Next we have discussion possible action regarding the purchase of a new squad car. This is another item that we talked about, we've already saved money up over the last few years, put money away and then, but we also talked about pulling a little bit more money out of this year's budget to make the, make the purchase. And if, I don't know who's gonna describe or how we get to this number.
Yeah, I can take that. Okay, so we're purchasing the squad, purchased squad from E-Wall. They wouldn't have been able to guarantee a VIN number approval for us to order a squad in time, so that we purchased the one that was in stock. The only difference was, is the one in stock had a spotlight on it, or we would've ordered it without. So it was a little bit more money, but we made some adjustments on the equipment side of things to make up for it. So we're looking for the approval for the E-Wall purchase, 45505, that was before any registration fees and things like that. I didn't have the, I handed my official paperwork in to Angie already, it should be in invoices, what the official amount is that we pay for.
47, I believe, 46, 47?
Not sure. I think it's 46.
46, I think, it's either there or off the there.
So at the end of the day, how much were we pulling out of this year's budget?
It was like 26.
So, we have 36,000 that we had set aside for squad car, and then we're pulling out 24,000 out of the budget. We're gonna have the trade-in that's gonna come in as well on our other, on our old squad car, I just don't know if we'll be able to get that into the 24 revenues or not. I mean, that might be something, might not be able to get traded in until January. My plan with that is because we're switching makes, we're going from a Ford to a Dodge, is a lot of that equipment will not transfer. So we're going to have a fairly well-set-up squad car, other than it's going to pull our camera, the radio, the radar, but it'll have our light controls in it and lights and switches and stuff. So I'm going to advertise it with your guys' approval on the chief's website as a semi-equipped squad car and see if somebody wants to buy it for transports or like an admin squad and see if we can get more money with the equipment in it. And then if not, we'll pull the equipment and we'll send it, sell it on the auction website. From what I've seen on the auction websites, they're getting around five to six thousand for used SUVs. So we should be getting that back as well into our revenue side.
Your car's forty-five, six, seventy-four.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't have my numbers.
I remember when I started on the county board twenty-one years ago, squads used to be about twenty-four thousand. But then that's not valid. Okay, any more discussion, anything else to add on that? Again, it's, we had this all set up with the idea it would help with next year's budget to be able to take care of this. Again, any more discussion? One delivery, pretty quick.
We already took delivery out because we got the one.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yes, so, so we took the one that was in stock before anybody else bought it and then, so we have the squad. We've, we're thinking we're going to be able to get everything else ordered in time before the end of the year through our supplier. He thinks, he thinks we'll be able to get everything invoiced before the end of the year, that's all.
So in, in use, in, this was it?
Fleet by one. Fleet, January.
January, okay. Okay, any more discussion? Somebody make, like to make a motion concerning the purchase?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the new squad car that we already have.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion second to approve. Is there any more discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Weisbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker. Councilmember Gannon.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisapple.
Yes.
Motion's agreed to. Next we move on, Fire Department, Chief King.
Got the report here. Last month we had fourteen calls per month. All the fire drills and fire prevention for all the kiddos up at the schools, both private and public schools were all hit this year. We did posts for positions open at the fire department. We did interviews on October thirteenth and we interviewed eight and seven of the eight are for sure coming on board. The eighth one is still up in the area, but that's good news for the department is to keep the staff roster full. They'll start school around February first. And then this winter, we got a whole lot of classes coming up. There'll be potentially a fire two class in Durant. The new hires will probably have to go to River Falls or Orla Claire. And then the guys will be, the newer hires from last time will be doing driver operator training, which I think the first half is actually down at Evans. We'll try to get caught back up on all of our trainings.
Do we just have a round of people go to senior status or?
So yeah, I've had a lot of questions on the hiring, so many at once. It's the most I've ever hired since I've been in Durant. We had two people this month, or one moved away a while ago. Another guy's leaving this month, moving back to his hometown. So that created two openings. We had one opening before, so that's the third one. And then we got four guys going to senior membership, which is, doesn't count against our thirty-six active. Senior membership is just a different layer of what they can and can't do. They lose their benefits, retirement, from the city and the rural at that point. So there's four guys going to senior membership for sure. So once we're full with all the seniors, we'll be forty-two, forty-three members total. It'd be good to be filled up again. And all, all the people are all local, except for one just moved here, but the rest of them live within the city limits or, there's only one that lives like seven miles out. The rest of them are within three miles of the station, so. It's good news.
And again, and once they, once they start training, about what's the period of time before they go?
So they'll start training in, I'm hoping right around the first February and they will be all certified by the May, whatever the third week of May is, that weekend is when they'll test out at the college. So it's a hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-four hours they go through in three months.
Any other questions for the Fire Department? Hearing none, we'll move on to Ambulance, Sheriff Bigel.
In October, we have thirty-four calls. No transfers. Our monthly training and meeting was with May oh one. Our upcoming events are the Ho-Ho-Ho Craft Fair that is on the thirtieth from nine to two, which is a fundraiser for the Durant Ambulance. We have, in December, we're doing an MBA in chain use for training. And in January, we have the one, one's the conference and expo coming up.
And upon the thirtieth, you'll be right at the front entrance again?
Yes.
There are a lot of nice donations that lead to the raffle, correct, every year?
Correct.
So taking every opportunity, you might not be big on, on the craft show, but you can just come to the front of the high school, lock in and buy those tickets for the, for the ambulance. It's, I always do that every year and I want to encourage other folks to do the same. Always a lot of nice stuff on the raffle.
We appreciate it.
Of course, a few years ago, I think I wanted a couple twenty-one bags and then somebody had to, somebody had to explain to me what they were. Somebody says you want twenty-one bags? I'm like, and? Okay, any other, any other questions for ambulance? Hearing none, next we move on to Public Works Utilities. I guess Matt, you're doing double duty, engineering report and your report?
Yeah, not much to do going on in the engineering world. We are still in the PSC ninety-day window for the review of the water filter construction portion of the project. That ninety-day window ends in January. If we could get the approval anytime between now and January, once we get that, then we will start the bid documents and get the project out for bid. We are doing the topography for Seventh Avenue East, a couple thousand bucks to get the topography to start the engineering. We have that money left over in our budget, so you should or already have seen Cedar up there doing the topography work for the Seventh Avenue East project. Even if we decide not to do that project, that data is still good and useful for, for many, many years, so. Other than that, staff has completed all their fall winterizing work. Just did a last round of street sweeping today, as it's supposed to move into the below thirty-two temperature. The sweeper will move into, move into storage for the winter. Other than that, all of our snow equipment is being assembled on the trucks and going through and preparing for the white flakes like they were forming today. Hopefully I could use winter snow stones like today until May, that's fine, or until March, that's fine with me. Other than that, the rest of my stuff's on, unless you had any questions specifically for me?
Any other questions for Public Works Utilities? If not, we'll move on, discussion possible action regarding the twenty-twenty-five street project, including borrowing funds for completion of Seventh Avenue East between Prospect Street and Wells Street. I suppose there's two parts to this. First of all, what exactly we're doing there. Second of all, the financing on how this, this works out. And again, this is the idea that we would be doing these smaller projects year by year to improve our streets and infrastructure. So Matt, you want to start?
Sure. Couple of years ago, for those of you that have been on the council long enough to remember that, we have been talking about doing what's called a secondary street project, like one to two block projects that have very minimal, if any, utilities underneath, just road projects to start to keep, I want to use the word keep up, it's just a little possible to keep up, but to start creeping forward into, into a better road, roadwork program. With doing that, street projects, the Seventh Avenue East is next on the docket. Basically how this has arrived is we use a Pacer rating. Every year I have to report to the state on the conditions of our roads on a, basically a one to ten scale, one being worst, ten being the best. So Seventh Avenue East is next on that. There are no utilities other than two stone catch basins and a forty-foot chunk of pipe, so pretty minimal to the, to the stone. The rest of it would just be street construction, some sidewalk, a few things like that. So this project we would like to do in twenty-twenty-five, we would need to start the engineering here within the next month or two. The design phase usually takes us probably about, on a small street like this, you know, about forty-five days to design it and then get the bid documents ready. If we were to do this in twenty-five, we could get the bid out in, in February, open the bids up the end of February, beginning of March, to, to get some competitive pricing. So that would be kind of the plan moving forward. You want me to roll into bar and, or you want?
No, no, you can right ahead, we talked about it, see you right ahead.
So in order to pay for this, originally tonight, we were, we were going to talk about our debt levy. So in order to pay for this, this project's roughly going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So in order to pay for this, we would need to borrow an extra hundred and fifty thousand on top of the current levy. What that would do to the taxes would essentially raise the taxes about a hundred and fifty dollars for every hundred thousand assessed value of your property. So for example, my property taxes would go up three hundred bucks. We just found out today, through our meeting with elders this morning, we are working on the, on the water rate case. Part of the water rate case, there is a PFP, it's called a public fire protection charge. The general fund is required to pay the water fund a certain amount of money for all upsized mains, upsized water pumps, the upsizing in the water tower and the reservoir for essentially fire protection for the properties in the city of Durant. We found out today that we can move that charge to the water bill, to the monthly water bill, without having to reduce the levy by the same amount of money. So basically, right now, we are, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars scheduled from the levy to be paid to the water department for up charges and fire protection. We can take all of that money, move it to the, to the water bill for X per month, it will come right on your bill, be a water, a water fire protection charge right on your bill, which then frees up a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on the levy. We don't even have to, we don't have to remove that. Twenty thirteen, they passed a law that says if you reduce the levy by that much, took that off, put it on the water, you would have to reduce the levy by what you took off. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, they made a special exemption for, for fire protection. So today, we found out some information, we don't have a whole lot more other than that to move forward to as how much it would cost the water bill. You're paying for it one way or the other, you're paying for it on the taxes or you're paying for it on, on the water bill. So we could potentially move that PFP charge to the water bill and free up a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the levy to then shift that hundred and twenty-five right into road construction and not have to raise the levy to pay for road construction other than maybe have to borrow, say, twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars to round out, round out the project costs. So with that being said, there's a lot of information that we learned today, also information that you folks need to digest. Tonight, basically what we're looking for is action, whether you want to proceed with the road construction project for twenty-twenty-five payable in twenty-twenty-six, so that we can move forward with engineering and planning and bidding. We can talk about exactly, our options are either three options essentially. Option one is we borrow the hundred and fifty thousand, raise the tax levy by a hundred and fifty dollars per hundred assessed value. Or option two, we take that hundred and twenty-five PFP charge, put it on the water bill as a monthly fee. One other advantage to that then is then non-taxable properties are then paying fire protection charges. Currently, non-taxable properties are not paying anything for fire protection because they're not paying taxes. So by moving that to the water bill, that charge would be distributed by the size of their water meter. So these non-taxable properties, i.e. us, counties, school, churches, they would then be paying a fire protection fee, which they are currently not paying now. And some of those buildings are probably some of the biggest fire protection buildings that we have in town. So that's another benefit of, of doing that. So our option would be A, raise the levy, or B, move the PFP charge to the water bill, free up a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on the levy and use that for road construction and then have to borrow minimal dollars to, to round out the road construction. So if, I understand it's a lot to digest for, for one night. Are you interested in A or B, one of the two, interested in doing a road, a small secondary street road construction project in twenty-twenty-five? Basically, interested in that, moving forward with essentially the design phase of that project is what I, what we would like you to kind of answer tonight. As far as actual numbers and dollars, we're going to have to dive into that PFP charge and all that information as we move through the water, the water rate case. So some of that information of how it would impact the water bill, we're not going to have that for months as we move through the water rate study.
No, that would be an annual, on your water bill annually.
Monthly.
No, but I mean, it's year to year, every year.
Every, yeah. Once we move, yeah, once we move it, it's there forever.
What we're talking about was levying next year, leaving it there and having that sustainable for longevity.
So the, the original conversation was to, the green was going to be the extra hundred and fifty thousand on top of the current debt.
Right.
So that green would go away.
The green would go away.
We would not accept, we would not acquire any more debt if we moved the PFP charge from the taxes to the water bill.
But the question, when you were saying that, that when we do the project in twenty-twenty-five, if we went that direction, so we're not talking about adding it to levy for next year. We're talking about adding it to the twenty-twenty-six levy.
If there's a levy, right.
If we go that direction, if we go that direction.
Yes.
But in the meantime, so the other question is, and maybe this is something you don't know yet because you just found this out, is what does it do, what do we have to do to take, to transfer? And if we go the other direction, we'd rather put it on the water bill, take that money to do that instead, what do we got to do and how long does that take?
It'd be part of the rate case study. So as soon as the rate case, as we do the rate case study, whatever date the PSC says you can now start implementing this, that would be the date that we implement it. So let's just say they pick July first, if we, if everything goes the way it needs to go with all the hearings and everything. So July first, that charge would then go on the water bill. What we have on the tax levy currently this year, we, probably half of it would have to pay for the first half of the year, the last half of it you would essentially have to help pay for the twenty-twenty-five start of the project.
We can do a budget amendment to move those monies around.
Do you have any idea how that would affect a water bill? I mean?
No, we don't yet.
You don't? I don't have a good way, I'd hate to tell you, five dollars in terms of ten, ten dollars. We have zero answer to that question.
Yeah, so, okay, so now the schools have to pay for it, the churches have to pay for it. And how does the school pay for it if they've already done their budget? I'm just?
It's part of their utility. Whatever they, whatever they put in for the utility.
Plus it'll be, it'll be a flat amount.
Yeah, it'll be a flat amount. So it'll just be, for example, it'd be ten dollars of a month. Hold me on that, but it's.
I like that idea a lot. I sometimes think churches get away with too much as far as the tax rate.
Okay, so, so the first thing is, you know, if anybody wants to speak up right now and say we don't want to do anything, forget the damn row. You could do that. Or what is, what is your feelings on about moving forward with this and which one, which direction should we go?
Question first. So the one twenty-five, we're paying regardless. Is that on the levy every year or that's?
Yes.
On every year?
So yes, that is an annual charge that the PSC, so there's a, a long formula that the PSC works out that, for fire protection that has to be paid. Either it has to be paid on the tax levy or it has to be paid on the water bill. That is set by the PSC. So when we do this new rate case study, that will go up. That hat, that, when they, when they do the new rate case study, that might turn into a hundred and sixty-five thousand, that might turn into a hundred and eighty thousand. We don't know that yet. So by keeping it on the levy, now we got to find extra tax dollars to pay for that fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar increase, just in what the PSC is going to say. So we're going to have to put something on the water bill. The question is, do we put the whole twenty-five and the rest, and the extra fifty, sixty, seventy goes on the water bill? Or we move the whole hundred and twenty-five plus the extra fifty, sixty, seventy to the water bill?
But like to Travis's question or point, like it's not just a one-time thing?
No, this is regardless, every single year this has to be paid.
So I'm either paying it on my water bill or I'm paying it on my.
Every year, yeah. If you've been paying this charge every single year for, since the water utility has been in existence, the city just chose to put it on the tax. in existence, the city just chose to put it on the tax roll.
And put it in general.
Yeah, put it in general.
And then just paying, paying over. Because you got to remember, at one time, the last time I know that this was discussed and the question came up about, and that whole thing about, about creating another utility or doing something, is that you had to automatically take that off your, and that's obviously not the case here. This is the first I've ever, I've heard that we could do this.
Today, today was the first.
I did not, I, I, I've been in meetings, or we've all been in meetings, but discussing stuff, this is the first time I've heard of this.
It was just, just to clarify, so Matt and I and Angie, we all were in this meeting today, and we all said, no, this is, you can't do that. And the gal from Ellers, Lisa, she's like, yes, you can, I do this all the time. I was like, I don't, not that I don't believe you, but you need to send me something that shows proof of it. Because I, I know you do, I know you know your job, but send me something. And she did. So we've got proof from the state that, the documents that she sent, that we can indeed take it off the tax levy and use that levy for something else, and not reduce the levy, and then put it on the, on the water bill. And that way, I put a bullet across everybody who's a water customer.
So you want a recommendation, most of, why wouldn't we do this?
No, this is, so this is, yeah.
Yes, right, this is street construction.
This is a different, for a different day. It'll be table, but as far as the smaller projects, yeah, I'm for that. We've been talking about for years, it's been working good.
So is that a percentage then? Or so I can be paying the exact same as Nick, even though Nick uses four times as much
Water? Has zero to do with water consumption. It's a, it's a flat rate, it's a flat rate, based on the size of your water meter. So someone with a 3/4 inch meter might pay, so currently, right now, just base charges that we charge for water, a 3/4 inch meter pays $13, a 1-inch meter pays 15, and then it goes up to 20, and then it goes up to 40, and like a 6-inch meter pays $100 a month. The charge would be based on that same type of formula. So your, your larger meter facilities require more fire protection. So a, for example, a, a building with a 6-inch water meter might pay $100 a month, a homeowner with a 3/4 inch water meter might pay $5 a month. I don't know, don't quote me on those numbers, but that's how, that's how it will be laid out. So your larger buildings that need larger water meters, that need larger fire protection and up charging mains, then would pay more than the average homeowner that has, you know, 1,500 square foot home.
So I'm, I agree with what Travis said, we've talked about this before. My question more was like, this got better for us, so why wouldn't we do the?
Yeah, at the end of the day, you're 100% right, this got better for us, and it didn't.
But I think we want to find those numbers.
We do, we do.
Yeah, we want to define them, yeah. So basically, we're coming on this with a direction tonight, and the direction is that we're going to put this together with the water study, and let's see how we can make this work. Are there any other questions? Anybody else have an opinion? You got, which way we should go on this?
I mean, I, I think it makes sense. I guess I'd like to know what the rates are going to be. Would we give a warning to?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, oh, yes. There's going to be a public hearing.
Yeah, stop, stop, same shit.
Because this will be ranked into the water rate increase, yeah, for sure.
Are you enjoying it, Amy? Think we should go that way?
No, I, oh, yeah. Absolutely.
So that's basically where we're leaving at. Directions been given to staff, let's move forward. And with that, but, and, and again, no, the feeling is that we got to do, so you're still going to do the preliminary engineering work here?
Yeah, so that next, next meeting I'll have.
Yeah, we'll have a number.
Next, next meeting I'll have a contract to do the design work with Cedar, so we'll be approving a design contract with them at the next meeting. Before I brought that, I just wanted to make sure we're all in consensus of doing a project and funding it either one of those two ways.
Okay, any other questions on that? Next, we have discussion, possible action regarding the purchase of Exel Energy property, a well street in front of the sewer plant. Staff has been, city administrator, superintendent Gellis have been working back and forth with Exel Energy. They, there were three pieces of property that were discussed that that might be in the city's interest, but each one of them is sort of defined in a different way, and so on. The, at this point here, the piece of property that we really wanted is the four acres next to our sewer plant. I mean, that's the, the, the other two were eh, you know, you know, as far as that goes, so we were discussing the one next to it. Because of the fact that, that it's, the way property is defined, about public good or not public good, correct? So what I wanted to do is when we got back a number from them, and I had said that it fell within where we want to be about buying that four acres, that's what that we should do, but I said, let's put it on the agenda tonight, and I'm looking for a commitment to the number. If you want to explain where we're at, go ahead and explain.
Of course, it's four, like Mayor said, it's four acres. We've expressed interest in it, we've met with them in person. They have come back to offer us a price of 37.50 per acre, and then there'd be some closing costs involved in that. We need to put together an offer to purchase if the council's in agreement of that, and then we would take ownership of that four acres. Anything else, Matt, that we want?
Pretty much, well.
As we said, this is the property that we would use in the future to expand, we would be, and then, so let's, I mean, it's the one that we really want.
And we're not going to be interested any further on the other, those other ones.
At this point, no, no.
What was the total number of acres we discussed prior?
Yeah, so we, we, it was, it was about 10.
About 10.
Those other interested parties, aren't there?
Yes.
And those other, and those other parcels, yes. So we're kind of taking a backseat to those other interested parties, and then they, we were going to talk to those other interested parties, and then come back to us. I mean, at the end of the day, we have to approve all the CSMs and all the work that they need to be done down there. We'll probably still have some road right-of-way stuff that we have to work with, easements that we have to work through with them as well, and whether we have to acquire those easements or how that works is, we're working on that piece. But this is a clean-cut, four-acre chunk of land that, that there's no CSM that needs to be done, no nothing that needs to be done. So this was lot one, our number one interest, so we figured we'd move forward with this one, and then the other two lots, we would, as we work through the CSM and the road right-of-way and the easements, we'll bring back at a later date.
Am I looking at the right piece of property here? Is that the 008, those three digits?
Yeah.
The blue.
I think it's 007.
007.
Says the one that's highlighted.
Are there physical tracks on there still? Have they all been taken?
Oh, this one.
It goes all the way down here.
Yeah. It's technically 3.75 acres, I'm just saying four by five.
Do you want to see it in person?
That's right.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at the offer for that parcel. Is there any more discussion?
We feel like the best we can do with last season is come right back with it. You said spell in the window, but.
Yeah, we, we offered them, then they come.
Yeah, so we did back and forth.
We've been back and forth about three, four different times, we had a made-up form, but three different times.
Yeah, obviously, it's going to be utilized at some point in the future for the city, and we're not going to acquire it for anything but.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, any more discussion concerning the, this parcel? Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Exel Energy property, well street in front of the sewer plant for $3,750 an acre.
I'll second.
We have a motion second? Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Weisemeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Minkie.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisappel.
Yes.
All six in favor.
Next, we have approval of Durant Builders' pay request, number seven, for the swimming pool project. Have it in front of you, application for payment, we're looking, they're looking for And Matt, everything's?
Yes, everything, everything's been reviewed, everything is good, we recommend payment.
Just to let you know, obviously, we have a couple of things at play here. Obviously, we have the money that we're borrowing that's going to cover part of our expenses that we're going to be paying back right of way, and so on. Also, with my meeting with the swim club, we talked a little bit about, because there are still some funds that they have, we've exhausted, most of the donated funds that are already in, and so on, but there is some left in there, and we'll, obviously, we continue to work with the swim club to make sure that those are also exhausted before we get in to the other. I think we're in a situation where the pay requests are going to slow down a little bit here over the winter. It puts us in a situation where the great bulk of stuff will be coming in the spring. Then we still have that line of credit to get us to the final finish line, and some final donations before we get there. So I, I think we're still all looking pretty good on all of that, we just need to make sure that everything, but again, this is what we're at. Any discussions concerning the pay request? Hearing none, somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to make the payment to Durant Builders for the $66,694.75.
It's a second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Minkie.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisemeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisappel.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanaugh.
Yes.
Let's pay the bills. Somebody like to? As far as meetings in the month of December, we'll be meeting next on the 11th. The next scheduled meeting after that, we will not be meeting on Christmas Day, but we will have a meeting at the end of December. There's a couple of things that come into play. We like to get it as close to the end of the year to pay as many things as possible. It's usually a pretty short meeting, but then also, we will have a, there's a license that we need to consider for publishing, and, and we're going to try to time that out a little bit to make sure we have some timing in there. But obviously, it's, as we said, the big meeting will be on the 11th, most of the activity, and then we'll have a meeting at the end of the month, and wherever it falls, some, they're around that last week of the month, a week of December.
I just need to get a date before I can get published.
Yeah. When are you going to publish?
I need to publish it by Friday. I need to get information ready to go. There's another one with their license, they're changing their LLC.
Can we?
So if they want it for just more.
Can, can, can we do it on the 30th? Do we plan right now that it's easiest to do it on the 30th?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm fine, I'm open, I'm good.
Uh, anybody going to be, I don't know, people look at your calendars? Because again.
Just needs to be financed or.
We're not going to do it on a Friday, we're not going to do it. If we do it on, on Monday, December 30th, keep, that, call a special meeting, the second meeting, December?
I'm off, I think.
It just isn't.
And this will, it's to pay the bills and take care of that. I'll let you have to do it, thanks. Like I thought you'd say one.
Well, at this point, let's tend to say that's when we'll meet in.
What time?
Whatever, what's for everybody?
Did we do an earlier meeting? Like 5 o'clock?
Which day?
December 30th, Monday?
I'm all good, bud.
Anybody else?
Used to be.
What time are you?
Well, we could, because again, it's just going to be a special short meeting to pay the bills and deal with anything that we have to deal with.
I don't know. I'm good.
I wrapped, but it's an invite, so I might have to.
You have what?
I wrapped, Ten River Falls, but it's an invite, so it might be like a 2:30 tip, so I.
Can double-check the time, can I double-check the time tomorrow? And then I can, otherwise, you're the only one that pays.
Right, I mean, if it's.
Yeah, it's just.
Do you have a password?
Yeah, so we should get the text.
Because it's asking. I don't, I don't think I have that.
I do, it's in the office. I don't have it off the top of my head. I can email to you.
Because otherwise, we, all of our passwords are the same, is anybody else remember what their password was?
I think it was Duran 2024.
I knew it was something, but I, I thought there was some, capital at the end.
Nope, capital D at the beginning.
Or I mean, exclamation point.
Exclamation point, yes.
We need that password to do what we do here?
I think so. And you said not, no capital D?
Capital D at the beginning, Duran 2024, exclamation point, nobody knows that, it's on radio. I just, I just. That's not it, that's really not it. Don't.
That's not my password.
Now we're going to change them all the way, too. I'll take factor authentication and a password change.
Go in your email.
Have we read in the email?
The email.
Do you ever mind?
It'll be in the prayer too. It'll be here, it'll be the reindeer, and then the horses at the end.
Because I know you can only have one sound.
I've been charged with frame light this year, so. Yeah, or you can.
I went to settings and then security and privacy, but I don't know if this is the right spot.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Just for emails.
Okay, so somebody like to make a motion to approve the vouchers, please?
I'll make a motion, we approve the vouchers as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the vouchers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Weisappel.
Yes.
Councilmember Minkie.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisemeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanaugh.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Vouchers are approved. Any other future issues or agenda items? If not, next meeting's the 11th, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion second to adjourn, all is in favor, say aye?